Welcome and good evening to the Lewiston City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, September 23, 2013. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. I ask to stand and join us will be led in the pledge by Dominic Pinozzo.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item of business is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the council on agenda items or other items you wish to bring to the attention of council. Citizens are encouraged to discuss operational issues in advance with the city manager. In consideration of others wishing to speak, please try to limit your remarks to three minutes. Are there any comments this evening? Please come up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Joan Francis Bidescom-Mused-Frank and my mailing address is 417 Fifth Street, Apartment 4. I live with my mother right now, Marie Iyer, who ran for Coroner when she was 72 years old. Okay, my concern is an issue at the, and I addressed it last meet time, and now the place that got condemned, it's been condemned for 20 days and so far the tenants, I was assistant manager there, the tenants that caused the place to be condemned are still there. They, and I know the firemen had been there many, many times because they were burning in the back and it got too heavy and the police was, I was only a manager there for almost four months and the police was there every week almost since I was there. The tenants don't care and if we're running a city, we should run it like landlord, landowner. They would not put up with it when they asked, gave them a conviction notice and having a building condemned is a conviction notice. And so I've asked, on my birthday, it's today, I'm not staying from the meeting, I asked for my birthday present to have the mayor get busy, make the phone calls and get them out tonight or tomorrow. Thank you.
Jean, I did talk with Mr. John Smith, the building official, and right now the city is in the process of trying to identify who the owner of the building actually is since it's under foreclosure. So they're working with the banks trying to get, find out who the owner is so they can do the proper notification.
Oh, so they get to stay until it's been condemned?
Yeah, we've got to get the, get ahold of the owners to get them to board it up or we got to give them the opportunity to do that first before we can move in and do that and lean the property.
So the tenants can stay there while this is going on when it's going to be done?
Mr. Smith can answer that question.
If I may, I'm John Smith, I'm building official for City Lewiston. This structure was condemned, it was placarded, the power has been pulled from it. As of the last time we've checked, nobody is currently staying in the structure. They are there during the day, they're still packing, they're still removing stuff out. Yes, it is a hazard. No, we're not letting people stay there overnight. And once we identify who the current owner of the structure is, we're going to go through a process to get the building boarded up so it's not an attractive nuisance so folks can't get back into the building.
Okay, thank you.
And just let you know, they have battery-operated lights and they are spending time there and if he wants to come, go down there and check the buckets, in high days the buckets will be running over. I have buckets there and I have gloves there in the bucket, buckets, so you can see it, they're not staying there at night time and they are.
Okay, thank you.
Except the good people that live there. So our city needs to be run like a mountain on their loved land and God loves our country.
Are there any other citizens' comments this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Has been requested to move items D, E, and H to the active agenda. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to read the consent agenda as amended.
So, second.
It's been moved and seconded to read the consent agenda. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Approving the meeting minutes of September 9, 2013, work session and the September 9, 2013 regular meeting. Accepting the minutes of the August 1, Code Board of Appeals, August 28, Planning and Zoning Commission, September 4, Transportation Advisory Commission, and the May 8, 2013 News Advisory Commission. Approving Resolution 2013-48 by Title Only. A resolution approving a development agreement between the City of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation and Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories Incorporated, a Washington corporation, authorized to do business in Idaho, to prevent an easement for public utilities and maintenance of said utilities. Authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively said agreement and providing an effective date. Approving the first reading of Ordinance 4595 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston repealing Lewiston City Code, Section 31-9, enacting new sections to be codified as Chapter 31, Article 5, Sections 31-100 through 31-114. Establishing procedures for the vacation of public right-of-way and plats, providing for a public hearing process, providing for fees for the vacation of public right-of-way and plats, and providing an effective date. Approving Resolution 2013-49 by Title Only. A resolution approving a sub-agreement, Project Number 13447, between the City of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation and the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council, representing the State of Idaho through the Idaho Department of Transportation, to construct various highway safety projects in the amount of $53,000. Authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively said agreement and providing an effective date. And approving the vouchers payable for August 30, 2013, through September 11, 2013, in the amount of $1,680,856.07 and this excludes payments to Albertsons.
Okay, council, the consent agenda has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero. Move on to the active agenda. First item of business is possible first and second reading of Ordinance 4603. I'll entertain a motion to read Ordinance 4603 for the first and second time.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read Ordinance 4603 for the first and second time. Is there any discussion by council? Counselor Daniel.
The reason why I asked for this item to be pulled was, I think there's a reason why we have a first, second, and third reading. It's to give citizens the opportunity to come, voice their opinion, whether it's for or against an ordinance, and reading it the first, the second, and actually it's on the agenda for today to read the third and to adopt it at the same time. I think that kind of defeats the purpose of even having this, the first, second, and third reading process. You know, if, if one thing that we should do as a council when we have these meetings is be consistent with how, how the process goes. And so I would move that we read Ordinance 4603 for the first time only.
You have a motion on the second on the floor?
Yeah, is that in the form of an amendment to the motion?
Yeah, just to read it for the first time.
I guess the amendment fails for lack of a second. I think that, I agree, Counselor Daniel, that, that it's out of the ordinary to read for, an ordinance for three times in one night. However, we're getting ready to go live here in two weeks with our utility billing program, which actually is, I think, is a benefit to the citizens where now we'll get a monthly billing for our services instead of quarterly. It is something that's been brought to us, we've been updated on work sessions. I know that the, Mr. Marsh and Mr. Pinozzo have been pretty active in, in getting any information out about this. Basically, this, this ordinance is for, for basically changing our, our process to go from a quarterly to a monthly billing process. If it wasn't so timely, I would say, you know, I would be supportive of that. But I know that our focuses had been up till last council meeting to get our budget done and to focus on that, that has been taken care of. And now this really is a housekeeping issue. We're going to go live and active on that. We'd just like to make sure that we have our ordinances and everything in place so we can legally do so. And where the folks have spent a lot of time and energy to bring this system live and active by October 1st, I think that in this instance, I can, myself, I can support reading this three times in one night. It really doesn't raise any rates, it doesn't lower any rates, it just changes how we do the process. We've already done rate changes in our budget, so I think it's, a monthly billing really makes sense for our constituents. Counselor Daniel.
Just for the record and the minutes, I, I don't have, I don't have a problem with the ordinance, the content in the ordinance. I'm just, I disagree with the process of reading it three times and adopting it in the same meeting.
Okay. Counselor Clebert.
I guess I'd just add my two cents, but October 1st is the start of the fiscal year, it's the start of the fourth quarter of the year. I mean, it makes sense to start that process on October 1st. Here we are at the end of September. I don't think we had the ability to have it. We couldn't have actually read the first at the work session or at the next meeting, I don't think. So I don't think we had this set. So, then we've had, again, we've had the information, we've been talking about this for over a year, so I do think it's going to be a benefit to everybody to have the monthly instead of the quarterly billing, so.
Any other discussion by council? Motion on the floor is to read Ordinance 4603 for the first and second time. So those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four to one.
Approving the first reading of Ordinance 4603 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending Lewiston City Code, Chapters 1, 17, and 36. Enacting a new Chapter 36.5 entitled Billing and Collection of Utility Charges and Providing an Effective Date. And approving the second reading of Ordinance 4603 by Title Only. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending Lewiston City Code, Chapters 1, 17, and 36. Enacting a new Chapter 36.5 entitled Billing and Collection of Utility Charges and Providing an Effective Date.
Okay, council, Ordinance 4603 has been read for the first and second time. I'll entertain a motion to read Ordinance 4603 for the first and second time. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to read Ordinance 4603 for the third time by Title Only, suspending the rules.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we, I move that we read Ordinance 4603 for the third time by Title Only, suspending the rules.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read Ordinance 4603 for the third time by Title Only, suspending the rules. Is there any discussion by council? Counselor Randall.
Just as a matter of principle, I'm going to vote against the third reading. It's not that I'm against, against doing it under these particular circumstances, it's just like Counselor Daniel pointing out that he's against reading the three all at once and that's just why I'm doing my no vote.
Okay. Counselor Clebert.
And, you know, I guess I would offer, I've been involved in two that I'm aware of, I would have to go check my minutes and notes, but I know that I've been involved in first, second, and third readings twice in my six years on the council. Probably not since you gentlemen have been on, but before, and didn't seem to be a problem, so.
And I agree with Counselor Clebert, you know, we don't do this all the time. And it's important that we get this changed and get it so October 1, we can go live. Everybody that I've talked to about monthly billing for, for water and was ecstatic about it. They, they think it's the best thing we've done in a long time. So it's just a housekeeping issue. I fully understand the, what you guys are saying, but, you know, we don't do this all the time. So it's a, it's a matter of urgency that we get it done tonight, it's a matter of urgency that we give them the, our department manager and stuff, the freedom to move forward and get the billing and everything in line so we can get this all done. So, so I'm going to vote for this, I don't think it's a, it's a, I think it's an housekeeping issue and we need to get it done by October 1.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Randall?
It's just, I really do appreciate all the work that's been done on this, setting it up and everything like that. And like I said, it's just a matter of principle that I'm voting no. But that's other than that, I have no grudge against it.
Those in favor of reading Ordinance 4603 for the third time by Title Only, suspending the rules, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries three to two.
Approving the first reading of Ordinance 4603 by Title Only, suspending the rules. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending Lewiston City Code, Chapters 1, 17, and 36. Enacting a new Chapter 36.5 entitled Billing and Collection of Utility Charges and Providing an Effective Date.
Okay, Ordinance 4603 has been read for the third time. I'll entertain a motion to adopt Ordinance 4603.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt Ordinance 4603.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Ordinance 4603. Is there any discussion by council? Counselor Daniel.
Just like to restate that, once again, my issue with this is not the ordinance itself. I do support the ordinance, I just, I'm opposed to the process that got us to the point of reading it three times already and adopting it.
Any further discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries four to one. Move on to Item B, vouchers payable to Albertsons for $160.67. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Albertsons for $160.67 with Counselor Daniel abstaining due to conflict of interest.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve vouchers payable to Albertsons for $160.67. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries four to zero with Counselor Daniel abstaining for conflict of interest. Next item of business is reading of Ordinance 4601. I'll entertain a motion to read Ordinance 4601 for the first and second time.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read Ordinance 4601 for the first and second time. Is there any discussion by council? Counselor Daniel.
I move we consider Ordinance 4601, the, I move that we consider the first and second readings separately from each other for Ordinance 4601.
Amendment dies for lack of a second. Is there any other discussion by council for reading for the first and second time Ordinance 4601? Counselor Clebert.
When's the third reading?
October, second.
One meeting in October, so it would be the October reading.
Okay, second Monday in October.
Fourth.
Fourth Mon, that's right, because it's Veterans Day on, or, yeah, so fourth Monday. So about a month away. Any other discussion, Counselor Daniel?
Once again, I don't have a problem with this ordinance, just, just the process of reading the, the first two readings at the same time.
And Counselor Clebert?
Is there a particular reason we can't combine a workshop with a business meeting? The first Monday of, our first Monday in October, which I believe is the sixth, seventh?
For a work session?
So we could have another, so we could have another meeting, since we're only having one meeting in October?
Could create a special meeting.
I don't, I don't see any difficulty in holding a work session the first Monday in October.
We can, we can do that.
Well, we have a work session first Monday.
Or you want one on a?
So hold a special.
But apparently we're, we're canceling one of our meetings because of Columbus Day, I believe.
We have Columbus Day on the 14th. Are you suggesting that holding a meeting October 7th is that, on the same day as we have work session?
Why not?
That would be up to the council whether or not you want to schedule one.
We could do it at the same time, as far as I'm concerned, instead of driving up here.
Oh, during the work session.
Whatever.
Yeah.
I mean, read it first here, read it second there, read it third, and the 28th. The 28th?
I think so.
It's up to the council, you certainly can do that as long as we notice it.
I mean, if that would ease some of the councilors' concerns about multiple readings at the same time, then, I mean, I'm not opposed to reading it in a work session either.
I'd be fine with that.
Mr. Mayor remembers the council, you could do it either way.
Okay.
You could have a reading at a work session, as long as we notice it.
Certainly. So I guess I'll second his.
How about he want, his amendment was to read each one separate?
No.
So I'd entertain, is there any further discussion by council on the motion on the floor?
For lack of a second, didn't it?
It did. Counselor Daniel.
I move we move, I move to, that the second reading be put on the next work session agenda.
Or create, we'll create a special session for, council work session for the second reading. That'd be.
That'd be fine.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to amend Ordinance 4601 to read, or, to read 4601 for the first and second time, to read it for just the first time, with the second reading to occur at a special advertised meeting at the October work session. I get that right?
Yep.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the amendment on the floor?
Mr. Mayor?
Pro temp cannon.
Uh, I guess we're kind of splitting hairs here a little bit. The first and second reading for this is just kind of a formality. The third reading, again, will be at our, our meeting in October, but I just kind of think we're splitting hairs here for a five-second, six-second, second reading of Ordinance 4601. This is, again, it's housekeeping issues when it comes to the International Fire Code. I just, I just, I don't see anybody here that's, that's, looks like they're going to be talking for or against this. Again, we've done this every year, it's the same thing we do every year. I just, I just think we're kind of splitting hairs here to, for first and second reading. The third reading is where we adopted, if there's any discussion that needs to be had there, or tonight, we can do it. But I, I think we're just splitting hairs to just delay time.
I guess it's, you know, a lot of times our work sessions, I guess if we want to stick to protocol, that, that was why we wanted to keep the work sessions just to work session topics only. And, but we have, on rare occasions, had a, had a special session for, for business, council business at work sessions. I guess it sixes either way for me, whether we read once tonight and then again at the work session and then the third reading at the council October session. So, anyway, it's just important that this, again, this is a process that we go through every year to adopt our codes and keep them current and it's a housekeeping issue. And I guess if, if somebody has a specific problem with the code in particular, that's what I'm really concerned about, to make sure that if we do have those concerns, we get those out early. Pro temp cannon.
And also, Mr. Mayor, these have already been, you can tell me if I'm wrong up there, Chief or Linda, that, that these have already been adopted by the State of Idaho, right?
The Fire Code.
The Fire Code. So again, it's a housekeeping thing. State of Idaho has adopted, we have to adopt the same thing or we can make it more stringent, the law. So again, it's just kind of a housekeeping thing and, and even though I agree with Counselor Daniel to have the first, second, and third readings, but I think there's certain, certain things that we, that we don't need to do that on. And this is kind of one of them. And every year, we kind of go through this same, this same motion. So again, it, the, and I agree with the mayor, the, the work sessions were designed for work sessions, not to do legislation or, or that kind of thing. Because we always wanted to be in front of the public and on TV and so everybody knows what we're doing and, and a lot of the work sessions people can attend, so, so again, I just think we're just splitting hairs here.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment on the floor? Hearing none, those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries three to two. So the motion on the floor now is the amended reading, just the first reading of Ordinance 4601.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I please see a show of hands on that last?
Yes, those in favor of the amendment, raise your hand. Those opposed?
Okay.
So the, the motion on the floor now is to read Ordinance 4601 for the first time. Is there any discussion on reading Ordinance 4601 for the first time? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries five to zero.
Approving the first reading of Ordinance 4601 by Title Only. Excuse me. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending Lewiston City Code, Sections 15-1 and 15-1.1, adopting and amending the most recent edition of the International Fire Code and providing an effective date.
Next item of business is first and second readings of Ordinance 4602. I'll entertain a motion to read Ordinance 4602 for the first and second time.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to read Ordinance 4602 for the first and second time. Is there any discussion by council? Counselor Dan?
I obviously would like to do the, I'm trying to think of the right phrase for similar motion to the one we did for Ordinance 4601, so I'm.
Amendment motion.
Yeah. I, I move that the second reading be added to an agenda for the work session or the same date as the work session.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for clarification, the amendment is to read Ordinance 4602 for the first time tonight with the second reading to occur at our October work session, the special advertised session then. Okay. So amendment on the floor is to read Ordinance 4602 for the first time, the second reading to occur in our work session in October. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion carries three to two, or amendment carries three to two. Now, the motion on the floor is to read Ordinance 4602 for the first time. Is there any? Is there any discussion by counsel? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4602 by title only. An ordinance of the City of Lewiston amending Lewiston City Code, Chapter 10, adopting the 2012 additions of the International Building Code and the international existing building code, amending the 2009 additions of the International Energy Conservation Code, International Mechanical Code, International Fuel Gas Code, International Electrical Code, International Residential Code, International Property Maintenance Code, and the 2009 Idaho State Plumbing Code, and providing an effective date.
That completes our active agenda. I'll move on to unfinished and new business. Are there any city council comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor.
Pro Tem Cannon.
We are, oh, he left. That's really great. Losing a, an excellent employee of the management staff of the City of Lewiston, Dominic Pinozzo, who's, who's going to work for Clearwater Paper. He was our IT guy, and let me tell you something, he did one heck of a job for this city. We supported him and a lot of dollars, I think 800 and some thousand dollars over the last couple of years to bring our IT department up, to do the things that we're doing tonight with billing for our citizens, monthly billing, bringing a lot of things up to, really up to today's technology and beyond. And he's going to be sorely missed, because he was a great individual, he is a great individual. I won't say that in the past tense, I guess, yet. He is a great individual. He has done a fantastic job for the City of Lewiston, and I wish him well, but he's really going to be missed, and I hope all the counselors will agree with me on the job he did and how he brought that department around and did the things that he accomplished. And let me tell you, he worked, he worked 70, 80 hours a week here lately, and a lot of people in this town don't know that. But he worked a lot of time, a lot of our department managers and a lot of our employees work a lot of extra hours, but, you know, if that, if those computers aren't working, the city isn't working. So, all except for maybe the water department, but, but I'll tell you, he's going to be sorely missed, and I do wish him well.
I echo your comments, Pro Tem Cannon. Any other city council comments this evening? Counselor Clebert.
I hadn't been to the fair in a few years, and I availed myself of the opportunity to go up to the fair on Friday night, no, Saturday night, I guess it was, and one thing I'd never done was sit in the auction bar, and my current employer decided he was going to go buy a pig, so by golly, we sat down and kind of watched the kids walk the cows around, and I learned a lot about the 4H program and those kids presenting their animals and stuff like that. There's a difference between the cows and the pigs, obviously, because the pigs just kind of jump around and they try and whack them with a stick, but the, you know, the cows, they were leading around. It was interesting, they were getting really good prices for their, for their meat, and it seemed to be a real successful evening. I mean, I left at about 9:30, I think it went until about 11:00. So, good for the kids, and I think it was, it was a really nice show for, for the county fair this year.
Any other council comments? I'm going to put in a plug for our Veterans Day Parade. The Valley Veterans Council is now taking applications for folks that want to be in this Veterans Day Parade, which will be on November 9th. It'll start at 11:00, 11:00 a.m. That's a Saturday this year. If you're interested in putting an entry into the parade, I encourage you to get on the Valley Veterans Council website, which is valleyveteranscouncil-webs, W-E-E-B-S.com, and get an application. And I'd like to see a lot of folks come out and support the Veterans Day Parade again this year. It'll be our third year, so it's exciting things. Mr. Mayor. Counselor Randall.
We'd also like to remind people that the government's working on its budget, federal government's working on its budget, and the FAA is looking at another big budget cut, and consequently, our tower is in jeopardy. And so any support that you can give by emailing, writing, calling your congressmen and your senators, please do.
Okay. Any other council comments this evening? Okay. City manager, I guess Mr. Bennett is out, and so we have Ms. Jamie Shropshire filling in. Anything for the council today?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Advisory board and commission appointments, Pro Tem Cannon.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring for the council Mike Larson for the MSAP Board, please.
It's been a nomination to reappoint Mike Larson to the MSAP Board. Those in favor of that appointment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries five to zero, so appointment recommendation stands. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any work session agenda topics? Hearing none. Do we need to go into executive session for land acquisition tonight?
Yes.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session regarding land acquisition per Idaho Code 67-2345, Section 1C.
Mr. Mayor, I move we go into executive session for land acquisition as per Idaho Code, Section 67-2345, 1C.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, go into executive session regarding land acquisition per Idaho Code, Section 67-2345, 1C. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We'll take a short break, and then we'll go into executive session, then we'll adjourn immediately after with no business to follow. Thanks for everyone for coming.